For us to extend an invitation to a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed, and I note that Chief David Erickson is here today, and I asked him to come and talk to us about the dispatch center. I'm going to add him to the agenda, and we're going to call him first, once we get our minutes approved in our agenda set. Does anybody have any other additions to the, or changes to the agenda?
Yes, I do. One addition, at approximately nine o'clock, Todd Hightamp with the National Weather Service is going to join us to present the storm-ready community sign. He was scheduled to come in probably a couple of months ago now, and something had come up, and he didn't, wasn't able to get here, and just through some kind of miscommunication, we didn't get him on the agenda. It's not an action item, it's just a presentation, so he'll be here at about nine o'clock. So, you know, give or take, whatever, you know, when we get to that time, we can fit him in.
Thank you. Would we have a motion to approve the agenda with those two changes?
I'll move.
Second.
Chief Erickson, would you like to come on up and turn on the microphone? And the chief is here to tell us what happened at the dispatch center, and what we're going to be doing with that. Go ahead, chief.
Good morning. So, yes, it was an eventful weekend. I got a phone call somewhere around ten o'clock Friday night advising that the power had gone out for a short time at the, at the police department. When it came back on, our radio system wasn't operational. I came in and got in contact with Sioux Falls 2A, our radio vendor, and we worked for probably a couple hours over the phone trying different things to get the system working again. Once we discovered that wasn't working, the technician decided he would make the trip up, which he did, that night to try to get us up and running. At that point, we had PD analog and state radio. Those were the only two channels that we had. In the meantime, I'd contacted Sheriff Stanwick and let him know about it, and then we switched all the law enforcement departments over to just the PD analog, so our dispatchers could communicate with the deputies. The rest of the fire and ambulance services were contacted that evening, too, to let them know what was happening, and we started working through some workarounds, so that we could have communication with them. We eventually did move a dispatcher over to the sheriff's office, which is our backup location, and so we were able to dispatch for PD from the police department, but any paging or communications with ambulance and fire, we had to do from the sheriff's office. Our two dispatchers had to, had to work together and learn a new system real quick, which they did, and I commend them very, very highly for, for the job that they did. So, we got through Friday night. I got a phone call done from Sioux Falls 2A early Saturday morning, once they had diagnosed the problem, and what we have is a server rack that operates the radio system for the dispatch center. Now, this, the radio frequencies, nothing happened to them. Officers, people in the field could still talk on these frequencies, it was just dispatch's ability to communicate out of the building, and to, to have access to all these channels. That server rack contained several cards in it, and each card handles two radio frequencies. Out of all the cards that we had, all of them were damaged beyond repair, except for one, and that's why we're still able to communicate on the PD channel that night, which is a godsend, that we at least had that. In speaking with the representatives from Sioux Falls 2A, I haven't received an official quote yet on the repair or replace cost estimates, but they did give me a verbal, kind of off-the-cuff amount, and what they've explained is that the system is very antiquated. It is out of date. The cards that I spoke of a minute ago, that's not something that they can just pull off the shelf. Somewhere, they have to be built special for this rack, because they're not produced anymore. So, to replace those, I think it's nine cards, eight cards, would be somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars is their estimate. The trouble that we have is that they say that they're unable to diagnose anything further within the server rack, within, within the system itself, until they have those cards operational. So, they could get these cards repaired, plug them in, and discover that there's further damage that was caused internally inside the system. The other option is, is to replace the whole rack, replace the whole system. Their verbal estimate at that is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand. The city does have insurance, and Stacy's checking into the county side of things, since it, it is a percentage split on ownership there as to what trout we're going to go. Information was provided to our insurance carrier yesterday. I'm not sure, Stacy, if it's been provided to yours yet, but we've started the ball rolling, at least on that. The time estimates that we've received for replacing the rack, or at least replacing the cards, would be anywhere from one to two months, like I said, because they have to build them from scratch. Replacement of the whole system could be less. I haven't received an official estimate on that yet. So, right now, what we have in place is, and I'll just refer to it as a radio box, but it's essentially a unit approximately this size, that's sitting on one of the dispatch consoles, and that's given us ten radio frequencies. The only ones that we didn't include was the PD digital, which we don't use very often, Brookings State Radio, because we can communicate with state radio on Brookings Interagency, which we have, and then the Watertown channel that was just recently added. So, those three, we couldn't fit in the box. It could only give us ten channels. The ten channels, then, are just for that dispatch station. So, we're limited to one dispatcher being able to talk on the radio. If we have two dispatchers on at one time, that other dispatcher will essentially become a call taker, and will be revising the way we do things. A lot of larger dispatch centers do it that way, where they have call takers and dispatchers, and that's the system that we're going to adopt temporarily to get through this. I think I've covered it all, so I'll open it up to any questions that any of you have.
It's my understanding that there should have been a switch there, that would have prevented this from happening. Was it, was it a power surge?
Yes.
That did it?
What utilities explained to me, and I don't understand a lot of that, but it's, it was a flashover, they called it, and it actually happened in the, in the large green box that feeds this building, but it has an effect in the surrounding area, too. And so internally, parts failed on that, and you described it as a large ball of flame that happens inside the box. So, when the power cut and then came back on, is when we received that surge.
So, you, you know nothing about the switch that supposedly should take that?
Well, each, every bit of our sensitive equipment is plugged into a UPS for two reasons. The UPS is a battery backup system, so that if we do lose power, and our generator fails too, then we have some battery power to run the systems. They also act as a surge protector as well, and so we're investigating why there was a failure there.
Yeah, that, that's my question. It seems to me that switch, excuse me, should have handled that, and that's something that we do not have in this building, that we should have. So, I, I would be curious to know why that didn't handle it.
Yeah, and I guess I'm not sure what you mean by a switch, but I mean, we have, like I said, we have those individual UPSs. They're just a small box like this, that each vital piece of equipment's plugged into.
My husband could explain it better, but he used to take care of that building.
Right.
And he said, "There's a switch there. That should have handled that. Something is wrong with that." So, I guess, maybe we need to ask him, because I'm not up on all of that, but anyway, he didn't-
Sure, I'll give Greg a call and find out.
Give him a call.
Anyone else have any questions for the chief? And it's my understanding that when we get this all sorted out, that there's going to be an after-action report. We, I don't think, I haven't spoken to anybody that remembers us having an emergency before in our dispatch center, and I think we should look at our procedures. We got procedures for everybody else's emergencies, and maybe not for that one, and, and we're going to take a look at that. I think you all will discuss that at the January, maybe E-911 meeting. So, anybody have anything else for the chief?
Just, so we're, we're able to function?
Yes.
Okay, and so how, have we been able to function over the weekend, and did that work out? Did, you know, because I got a call just to alert, and I know you guys were working on it and stuff like that, and wanted to make sure that, you know, having a SDSU game in town, and different stuff like that, and, you know, that things were, did it work over the weekend? Were we okay with everything that came?
Yeah, the, the only time that we were, I would say, down on any of the, the areas such as ambulance or fire would have been, the time it took us to get somebody over to the sheriff's office and get that system up and running. The, I will say that this temporary box that I was speaking of, they, they built that for us, but we don't own it at this point. It's on loan to us, but I would like to consider, when this is done, on purchasing that temporary box, and having that over at the sheriff's office. What's there got us through, but it is very, very old, and, and not very efficient, and this box would provide a better backup system than what we currently have. But I'll have to get a price quote on that, and that's for later discussion as well. I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that.
I don't know, Sheriff, if, while the chief's here, if you'd like to come up. I know you were going to talk in your report about what happened with all this, but do you have anything to say at this time, or?
Oh, he, chief pretty much, pretty much summed it all up. I think we had the goodness on our side, that there was no, nobody was injured in, in between, but they, they dispatched several, we had, I know, two fires in Elkton, and, and ambulance calls that always dispatched out of my office, and, and his staff, I was glad his staff stayed there, which, which the chief agreed that his staff would stay there. But, you know, my staff's not used to listening to the radio, so yesterday, we were talking about maybe some of my staff could maybe help out, but they decided to leave a dispatcher there, which was good, because they had an ambulance call right away in the morning yesterday, so. But, the equipment we did have, it did function, and we're able to dispatch fire and ambulance out of there and stuff. I do, I need to do some things different for efficiency. You know, the radios are up on a cabinet, because we don't dispatch out of there, and just, well, I'll, I'll get that set up, so when they come. Sean IT came and got us up a, a good computer, and some more screens for, for dispatch, so they could be over in that area closer to the radios and stuff. So, twenty years I've been sheriff, we've never, never used that. So, if, if something was going to happen, this was a good time that it happened, because nothing, nothing serious, there's no injury to life and this type of stuff, so this is a good learning experience for us, so.
Chief, as you walk through this process of determining whether you build new cards or replace the entire system, obviously, it's three times the cost to replace the system, the system is outdated. We're been told that. Yeah, I don't like throwing good money after bad, but at the same time, I think you, you really, I don't know where we make that decision. Is it the joint committee that makes that decision?
Well, I, also another factor, too, is the insurance. I'm hoping that they pay a large chunk of this.
Whether, whether they do or not, the system's got to be either replaced or repaired, so outside of who pays for it. To me, the immediate decision is, what are you buying here? Are you going to get the cards, or are you going to get a new system?
Right.
A new system, to me, makes sense, and-
It does to me as well.
The quicker we can get that process started, we'll let the, the financial part of it play out with insurance, or through the committee. So, to me, if you're looking for authorization to move ahead with a new system, I think we ought to figure out how we do that, and get that, that started, and we'll let the insurance work its way out.
We've, we've had a little conversation about that, and as you know, the chair of the county commission chairs the E-911 board, and I think purchasing a new system should be the decision of the E-911 board, which you will chair next year. Okay, all right. And hopefully, once Chief Erickson starts getting in information on other systems and what our repairs are, I would think that there will be more than one option, and that information should come to the E-911 board, and then it'd be voted on at that. And if that information comes in soon, I think we do a special meeting.
Yes.
Our next meeting is in January. I think we have to meet before then and make that decision, but, but what our joint powers agreement with the city says, that this type of thing, that we have a meeting, we, and the chief presents what it's going to cost, and what his recommendation is, and then that board votes on it. The city is responsible for two-thirds of the cost, the county's responsible for one-third of the cost. But that's, that's the process that's sent out in our agreement with the city.
Then, when the joint committee approves, it has to go back to the other two bodies to be approved again.
It does.
So, that process takes it out, sometimes several months, which I hope, in this case, it could be much quicker with a special meeting, if necessary.
I think the council only meets once in December, and it's going to be pretty quick, and then they're, they're done. Yeah, so we may not get to-
But I think, I think the city manager can, can make that decision as well, you know, in an emergency situation like this, where, you know, we're, we're operating, but we're not operating efficiently, and the quicker we get the system up and running again, the better.
And it would be helpful, we meet again on December 18th, and then again on December 27th, and it would be really nice if we were able to have something from the E-911 board, if we're going to replace the whole system, recommendation for our December 18th meeting, and approve it at that time. So, I mean, we're able to do that, if you've got the numbers.
Right, and then like I told you yesterday, I was hoping for those numbers yesterday, but didn't receive them, so shooting for today.
Do all of you agree that that's the process we should be following?
As expeditiously as possible, because there's public-
Right, I want to understand, though, that you're saying that we shouldn't, even if we have a, an E-911 board meeting, that whatever's approved there, I still can't order until it's approved by both the commission and the council, because I think that even puts us further behind.
I think the council is up to the council, how you proceed, and if, if the city manager can go ahead and make that decision, that would be fine. We could reach out and get a consensus prior to the December 18th meeting, if E-911 is making a recommendation. Am I correct? Everybody's okay with that?
That's right, but, but it does have to come before the full board.
Eventually.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean we have to wait until then, if we have a consensus.
We'll work it out.
Okay, very good.
This is, this is public service.
Well, in my, in my opinion, it's emergency.
It is an emergency.
And so, it's, it's working, you know, but it's not to the capacity, and it's a public safety emergency, in our opinion, so. That's my personal opinion, I guess, so if consensus and approval by our chair is, is good enough for me in this situation.
And you should know from insurance, by the time you get quotes in, how much they'll cover.
Right, right.
Anybody else have any questions for the chief? Thank you for coming. I know you have another meeting, and appreciate your being here.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give Greg a call if you get a chance.
Will do.
See if I-
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Would we have a motion to, well, first of all, are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Yes, there are two additional personnel action notices. They are sitting, I handed them out this morning at your desk, Justin Johnson, the new maintenance worker, and David Bublitz, the new mechanic in the highway shop.
We'll add those to the consent agenda. Any other additions or subtractions from the consent agenda? Would we have a motion?
I'll move.
All in favor of, excuse me, we're going to do a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the consent agenda consists of the minutes, travel and education requests, approval of personnel action, and approval of human services report.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Moving on to routine business, approval of claims.
Move approval.
Second.
I do have a couple of, well, additions and a change, too. I handed those out as well this morning. There is one change that's noted with the advanced taxes. If you go to the, the next page, you can see what the addition in the new total is, and then there is a large list of folks that helped with the election on November 6th, and that did not get to me in time to make the packet, but we would like to get those workers paid as well. Those are the, the two additions I have to claims.
Anybody have any questions about those additions to the consent agenda?
Move approval?
I think we already have.
You already did that, didn't you?
We did, and-
So, why we're discussing, anyway, okay.
Okay.
The additions.
Okay, let's have a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That was for the claims.
Pardon me?
That was for the claims.
Excuse me, for claims. Roll call, vote on claims.
Commissioner Pierce?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Hightamp is here, if we would want to do that before we get into our department head reports.
We can do that, Mr. Hightamp. Would you like to come forward?
Can we use the mic?
We do. That way, the people listening at home can hear you.
Okay.
And I think the light is probably turned on if it's not-
It is green, yes.
And then you can just pull it closer to you.
You bet.
Great, and would you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Todd Hightamp. I'm the meteorologist in charge for the National Weather Service in Sioux Falls, and I haven't been called Mr. Hightamp in a long time. I was looking for my dad, quite honestly. So, it's a pleasure to, to be before you, and to my right is Bob Hill, who's the emergency manager, obviously, all of you know, and Bob, I've known for many years, and he has done a, a great service to the citizens and the communities of Brookings and Brookings County. And part of the reason, or the main reason why I'm here, is to recognize the work that he has done, and by doing that, I am presenting a, a sign to you that says that Brookings County is storm-ready. What does that mean? That is not a certification, by any means, from the National Weather Service, but it is a recognition, the recognition of the work that Bob and his partners have done, to make Brookings County and the city of Brookings safer for the next time a major disaster, weather disaster, takes place. That doesn't mean that it's going to eliminate that disaster. It's going to hopefully minimize, and, you know, minimize the impact that that disaster will have upon your community, and make it more resilient to respond and to recover from said disaster. We know Brookings County has had many disasters in recent years, whether or not it's been flooding, winter storms, tornadoes, windstorms, you name it, we've had it here in Brookings County, and so we know it's just a matter of time before the next one occurs. And due to the good work that Bob and his partners have done, I, I think Brookings County is ready for that next disaster. Hopefully, it doesn't happen in any of our lifetime. Hopefully, it's pushed off down the road further, but we know, sooner or later, it will happen. But again, this is just a, a recognition of the work that Bob has done, but also, I have to emphasize, that these signs are going to be publicly displayed. These signs are going to be a method to keep all of you, and Bob, accountable. Accountable is saying that if we're saying that you are ready for the next disaster, and that Brookings County and the city thereof is resilient and prepared for the, the impending threat, the public may hold you accountable to that. And that, there's a little level of accountability when it comes to saying, "Hey, we're ready for it." Well, we better be ready for it. But I can tell you that the resources that Bob has, and the plans that he has in place, have met all the criteria to make and to receive this recognition from the National Weather Service. If those plans go by the wayside, if Bob does, no longer does what we've been, been expecting him to do, that recognition will be taken away. But I have no doubt in my mind that that will, we'll never have to worry about that in my lifetime, anyway. So, again, I want to congratulate Bob for this. I want to congratulate all of you for the support that you have given him, and previous emergency managers as well, to make Brookings a safer place for the next weather disaster. Any questions you may have?
Any questions? Thank you very much for coming.
You bet. Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
You bet.
Yes, by all means. Can you put a little more hair up my top?
[laughing]
For both of us, yes.
Moving on to department head reports. Chris, we'll start with you. Morning.
Just to update you on our process and what we've been up to, we have obviously finished our building permits. I think there's a couple straggler appointments yet, you know, as people call, but we've already established and, and starting to make our market changes for the year of, of what we do with, with the area. Just on a broad, broad stroke, I'll let you know that when we correct everything at the end of the year last year, and we get to our level of assessment we desire, then we look forward through the year of sales to see where our starting point is, and that kind of is a great indicator as to what has the market done in this past year. Preliminary broad brush stroke looks like Brookings County as a whole has increased in market value about five percent countywide, so we are continuing to grow. We've added about sixty parcels this year, as opposed to last year. Those are new plats, new things like that. We've obviously had more new parcels than that, but in the same process, we do a lot of combining. You know, somebody buys two lots, we combine it into one parcel, if they desire or build across it. So, we add new parcels, and we also combine parcels in the rear, but the net result is, we're about sixty parcels over where we were last year. Probably the biggest thing now is, we'll extend those changes. We're, we're already in the process. We're nearly completed with our full market analysis. We're waiting on one appraiser to finish up all of his paperwork and get it entered in the computer, so we can analyze our working values against market, and see where they are, if they need to go up, down, or no change. So, yesterday, Department of Revenue was here. I had, we conducted my annual audit. Probably the biggest thing that I will let the board know is, the audit itself is fine, but he informed me he's going to ding us on my ag taxable factor. The reason being is, we, Brookings County have chosen, and in the past, and I still continue to believe it, we have adjusted for our easement land. If you have a WRP, a grassland easement, things like that, that you put in, yes, it's voluntary. You got paid to put it into that easement, but it's no longer farmable. So, what we have done is, we adjust the crop soils down to the grass top dollar. So, basically, this year, it's a fifty percent reduction for the crop soils, because our values for our grass versus our crop is a fifty percent difference. It's a doubling. If it's a crop soil, it's double the top dollar. So, what we do is, we adjust it out of fifty percent to take it down to a grass. So, basically, the entire parcel, then, can't be cropped, so it's treated as if it's all grassland. Grassland easements are fine. They're focusing mainly on WRP, and the reason being is, there was some appeals made in Yankton County in years past, where the county refused to adjust for WRP easements. Property owners appealed, appealed, appealed. It went to the South Dakota Supreme Court. Supreme Court ruled that it's a management decision. To enter into that WRP contract, the county does not need to adjust. So, Department of Revenue, this year, is taking the position that, since we have a Supreme Court, says you don't have to adjust WRP, therefore, if you do adjust for WRP, we're going to ding you on your taxable factor. We have, we do, we'll continue to do that. I think it's the right thing to do. With that, it's the first time Revenue has ever asked for all of my ag adjustments. We've got a lot of parcels out there that, that are adjusted for purposes of rocks, terrain, topography, some local board adjustments, things like that, and this is all stemming from kind of the Brown County issue that's going on, where Brown County made adjustments, and it got brought to light, and there's a big uproar. So, now Revenue is really diving into every county. What are they doing with ag? How are they doing it? Why are they doing it? Is it documented? We have no issues with our documentation or reasoning- We have no issues with our documentation or reasoning why, but again, with that. So on a preliminary, I don't know what the shakeup is going to be, but I've got about 16,000 total acres of the county that has an adjustment. So those are parcels, 16,000 acres. Well, it doesn't mean I've got 16,000 acres adjusted. It just means that's the total acres. You have a parcel of land that's 160 acres. I might have 40 acres of that adjusted for rocks in that area or something. So the total is 16,000 of 473,000. So roughly, we're already at 3%. Of that 3%, where maybe 1, 1 and 1/2% is actually adjusted acres. So kind of looking forward at if he's going to ding us, he's got to run the math, do everything and take it out. So what it means essentially is our ag factor may not be 85. It might be 85.5. So we'll know that when he gets through with his analysis and compiles his report, which you will get, so.
That was going to be my question, what happens when we get dinged?
They just adjust your taxable factor. So if a county isn't in compliance, let's say a county assesses at 105% of market. Normally, if you were, we have to be between 85 and 100. And if you're not, Department of Revenue will adjust your taxable factor to make you into compliance. So if I was at 105, normally, if you're at 100, your taxable factor would be 85. If you're at 85 level, your taxable factor would be at 100. So if I was a county, if I was at 105, Revenue would adjust my taxable factor to 80. On the inverse, if I was under 85, then technically, your taxable factor, if I was at an 80, your taxable factor would be 105. Well, that would never fly because you can't be assessed more than you have value or taxed at more than value. So that would never fly. That's when Revenue would come in and say, all right, stop what you're doing. We're going to roll back to what you were last year. And Department of Revenue would order the county to do a 100% reappraisal county-wide, which in that case, then they might have to hire an outside appraisal company to come in and execute that for you, to get you back on. That has happened in the past with counties and the state, but typically, that would never happen. They're not going to let you be under 85. Counties can be over and they will adjust the taxable factor down to equalize that. So that's the dinging. He said, I'm just going to make you aware, because you have WRP's, because your county has adjusted, the position is now, because we have counties in the state that do, counties that don't, Revenue has taken a position that, all right, we got to get, and they're going to work on it, they're going to get some type of standardization. Do you, don't you, if you do, how do you do it? So we'll see what's going to come in the future, but right now, he said, I'm just going to give you the heads up. I got to ding you a little bit, and it's going to be in the taxable factor. But we have, again, it's such a small percentage of our total, 473,000 acres, that's actually assessed or adjusted that if there is any change, it's, he says, it might not even roll in the, it might still be 85, but it might be a little bit more, so.
What's the significance of the department adjusting our taxable value? What does that mean?
They're basically trying to say, all right, if you're a county that hasn't and you're at 85, now if you're a current county that does, we have to make you equal for school board, for school levy. It's the same thing with the ag exemption. I argued with Revenue a number of years ago. The law says if you own your property, you live on your property and it's a farming operation and you have ag buildings, you're allowed a $10,000 ag exemption. The law says the $10,000 comes off of the full and true. Department of Revenue instructed us contrary to that. They said, no, it comes off of your equalized. And that was fine and dandy. We went with that until we got the veterans exemption. The law verbatim is the exact same. $100,000 comes off of the full and true, not equalized. And the reason for that is with overlapping school districts, if you've got, well, I'll just use Hamlin County. We'll say Hamlin County is at 85%. Brookings County is at 100. Just throwing numbers out there. Farmer Joe builds $100,000 shed in Hamlin County and $100,000 shed in Brookings County. But because Hamlin County would assess at 85, that building starts at 85,000. Brookings assesses at 100, so that building starts at 100,000. So because of that level of assessment, when you apply the equalization factor, you might have a difference in taxable value. So Revenue in the past had said, okay, we want to keep it as clean and pure, so we're going to eliminate that. So you're going to take your farm building value, you're going to factor it, and then we're going to take 10,000 off across the board. So everybody gets a $10,000 ag exemption. And I argued with them and said, no, we can't do that. It's in law. It comes off of the full and true. When we went to productivity is when I really stepped up and said, all right, now we're all supposed to be on 100% market. We're all supposed to be at 85%. So we don't have this varying degree. So now is the time to say, we are going to do it by the letter of the law. Same with the veterans. We don't, we don't have a veteran that has $200,000 property factored at 92% or 94%. Get down and then take 100,000 off. No, we take 100,000 off and then factor the difference. And there's a difference. The difference in an ag building, taking the 10,000 full and true versus the factored, it's $1,500, which isn't anything in the middle levy. It might be $10, $12, but you multiply that by every ag exemption we have in the county and $10 or $12 that we're short for the levy purposes for school is a lot of money. So just wanted to bring you aware, you'll get the report when he compiles it here, probably January, February, when you'll get the audit report. But otherwise, the audit went flawlessly, no issues, no errors, found nothing. And actually, we did pretty good. I'm very proud of our clerks, our sales. We had 1,288 transfers in the year. His audit, we had to fix or tweak four. So it's pretty good. Pretty good, so. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Mike?
I know I'm up a little bit later, but I just wanted to point out a couple things that are going on. First of all, on the welfare side, we did get our federal funding did come in. We got about $2,700. So I don't think we'll have to worry about taking any, much more out of our general budget for this year. I think we'll have enough to finish out the year without going any farther into that. The other thing is on, and I didn't get a travel request in, it was a little late getting the notice from state, but on the 11th is a very busy day. We have Leadership Brookings that'll be here, and we're also having a mini-conference in Sioux Falls on that date, along with the Salvation Army meeting that day. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to have Eileen attend the mini-conference in Sioux Falls, and I will stay up here and run the office and partake in the Leadership Brookings and hopefully make the Salvation Army meeting. But otherwise, the office has been going pretty well, and we've been getting other funds, as you know, with the Low Income Energy Assistance Program in full swing. And so we've been able to avoid having to pay a lot of the welfare requests that we've gotten in by using other funding.
Thank you. Bob?
Good morning. The first thing is the siren test for today will be going on as scheduled. Even though the dispatch center had some issues, they still are able to test the sirens. So the public, we're here, the sirens going off at 1:00 PM. That's just a monthly test on them. On November 20th, we gave the ROTC senior class a tour of the Emergency Operations Center, and we gave them a one-hour briefing on civil-military affairs operations. And that's when the, how can the National Guard assist local communities was the gist of that one. November 28th, we had an ordinance review committee, and that's coming along. We've got some upcoming dates on that where we're trying to finalize that. November 29th, there was a safety committee meeting held. I had to miss that. I set it up and then I had to run over to the radio station. The Brookings County Veterans Affairs had a radio spot, and Mike was ill, so I stepped in for him since we look so much alike. It was, it's amazing how I can just step right in, especially on the radio, and they don't even know the difference. November 30th, I attended a CAFO forum near Mitchell, South Dakota. It was sponsored by Dakota Rural Action. It had speakers such as Kent Woodmansey from Department of Environment and Natural Resources, Jay Gilbertson gave a talk on water, and a guy from the LTAP, Local Transportation Assistance Program out of Brookings area, he came over and spoke. And then there was a lawyer spoke and then had a good meal. So that was a good, good session. I did bring back some information I'm going to share with my zoning board and of course, my liaison. On December 3rd, yesterday, Richard met with Sean, the IT person, to discuss how we're going to go about putting our planning meetings online, or he's going to put the planning meetings online. And we're starting to fine tune the details on that, what kind of thing goes on the screen under him and what titles we use and which districts are from. So that's coming along good. We do have a planning meeting scheduled for this evening, starting at 7:00 PM. On Thursday, there is a Blizzard meeting over in Mitchell. I'm sending Richard over to it. I'm going to a NACO Board of Directors meeting from 6:00 to 8:00 December. December 11th, apparently, it's a pretty busy day because along with Leadership Brookings coming here, we've got a tabletop exercise over at United Living Community. And December 16 through 21, I'll be attending a Public Information Officers course. And I'll send Richard here on December 18th if you have any questions for the Planning Commission. And that's all I have at this time. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kristen?
Good morning. So I'll make this kind of short and we'll save the end-of-year statistics for the meeting on the 27th. So Clis is installing the kitchen hookups, and they're also going to test our generator hookups, working with Bob to make sure that our building is ready for Red Cross to come and assess us for an emergency location. We do end up having motion lights on the south side of the building. What we found out is they actually weren't working, and so they are replacing those to make sure that we do have lights that would be there that are working, that actually do shine kind of into that shelter belt and then into the parking lot. So there were lights there, they just weren't functioning. In January, we are moving to our winter hours, which means Saturdays, we won't open until 1:00 to accommodate 4-H being in the ranges. But we are going to add Tuesday nights from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. One of the nice things about that is we are going to have small bore rifles and 22-onlies in the range, which I've had a lot of people already commenting when we put that out to the public, how wonderful that is. So that way, they aren't, people aren't coming in and having large guns, large calibers with them. They're just having the 22s, bringing kids out, that kind of thing and being able to have that for a night. So I've even had a couple of individuals in 4-H saying, hey, that's fantastic, we can actually come out and shoot that night, and a couple things like that. So we started sending out our member survey. Volunteers are getting that first. It's basically a, not necessarily a customer satisfaction, but what do they want to see in the future? So we can get some input on products, classes, different things that maybe we can utilize the building in a better form or fashion going forward. Really would like input from other people, so it's not just us trying to come up with what people think, you know, what we think they want to see, but really, what do people want to see? And then we can kind of build around that. We had no one, I believe, apply for the archery range committee representative on the board. When I sent out an email looking for people, are you still interested in being part of that archery range committee? The response was very interesting, and so I'm kind of taking it and putting that archery range, I feel like I'm breathing into that thing, kind of putting that archery range committee back together with almost new people on it. So we're going to start meeting and putting things back together, but I'm kind of spearheading that until we can form a new group with that archery range committee. And that's kind of it. On the 27th, I'm going to provide the end-of-year stats where we were at the beginning of the year with members' dollars and then where we are at the end of the year. Any questions?
Just based on all the stuff that happened with dispatch over the weekend, and maybe those of you that sit on that board know the answer to this, but what do we have out there that is a surge protector when we have the types of problems that arose over at dispatch that we have had in this building in the past and we've gotten fixed? Have we looked into that for the OAC to make sure we're covered out there? That might be something you'd want to put on your list.
What we have out there is just the computers at the front desk.
And I know.
Besides the alarms and the stuff that would be hooked up, you know, to that type of thing, heating and cooling and stuff, so I, you know, it's not as, I don't know, you know, the information we could probably serve back if something blew up and it blew a computer up, we could probably get that information back pretty quickly and it wouldn't be as much as a safety issue, I guess, unless everything goes out while people are shooting. But that's a protocol thing that we, I think, we have, you know, in place there, so.
I just wonder if we shouldn't look at that. I'm going to ask that same question about the Highway Department when that comes up, by the way. But I just wonder if we shouldn't be checking that we've got the proper surge protector equipment in all of our facilities.
One of the things, we did have a power surge issue here a few months back. And then Sean and I knew that the cameras lost some time, but then they were able to come back up on their own server reset. So that's something that we already experienced. Train is on its completely own separate system. Each unit is on its own system. So the only thing, and that's something that I did have written down to add into the EAP that we're working on, is what happens if the power goes out while we're in operational hours? I know the blue lights would turn on inside the gun range, but I don't know about the rest of the building.
So you'll work on that?
Yes. Thanks.
Vicki?
Good morning. All the delinquent tax notices have been sent out, and next week will be the publication in all of the county papers for the delinquent taxes. And then we'll hold the tax sale, certificate sale on December 17th at 9:00, and it's going to be up in one of the conference rooms next to Bob. So that will be next week. The reason it isn't in our conference room next to us is because the auditors, state auditors are there. They came last week, and we had four here yesterday, so they're hoping to get done, you know, as soon as possible. Jeff Schaefer from Parker is the lead for the legislative audit, and he will have his engagement letter for the meeting next week. But he said, if any of you have any questions, just be sure and stop down and ask them. But he will be here at the next meeting. So that is in process. All the levy and special assessments have been sent into the state. Nothing has been approved yet, so we're just waiting for approval on those so we can get ready to send out the tax notices. Met with Stacy on some budgets for the end of the year, and we will continue to meet and I think have some stuff ready for you next, next meeting. And also in your packet was our investment report for, as of November 9th. And it shows you all the CDs, the maturity, the amounts we have in CDs. The interest rate has went up a lot this year. We are over budget on anything that we had budgeted for interest, so that is, is good news. The last one that we, that I received was 2.50 is the highest that we have for CDs. And also for money markets, starting as in, it's a three-month period from October, November, and December is at 2.320. So that has went up as well. And then also on the next page, you'll see how much is in money market CDs for each of the banks that we have and the percentage. And one thing with First Bank and Trust, they also have our And one thing with First Bank and Trust, they also have our money market that we do our daily deposits into, and they're at a higher percentage now than they probably are at the beginning of the year, and that is because this was the, before we did apportioning, and we apportioned out $12 million. So that would take their bank down for the percentage, but it was just the timing of it was before we sent out the apportioning. So that was higher this year than, than it is normally. And any questions you have on any of what was reported? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Sheriff?
Morning. With the power surge that went on, everything at the sheriff's office worked properly. I don't think it was off long enough for my generator to kick on, but everything went down, but everything came back up. We had to reset or reboot some of the computers and stuff, but our, all our backup battery stuff worked, and, and so we had no issues there. We've, we've had other occasions, though, when we've had power surges and things that sometimes that has blown out a computer, but we've not had that the last few times because we just, every, every time, we do a better job of making sure that we got the proper backup stuff. And we test, the generator tests automatically every Wednesday morning to make sure that. So we go on generator for a little period of time and, and just making sure that everything is working properly, so. And unless you have any other, the chief pretty much summed everything up. But I am going to, like I, not to repeat myself, but to, we are going to make it so it's more efficient, so if this ever happens again when dispatch comes over, it's a little more user-friendly, so. Anyway, the other thing is, as far as jail, the report I gave you was filled out yesterday before courts, but I had 25 inmates. We did get four from court, so I am at 29, which we've done a good year. We, if you want to say it's a good year, but anytime I'm down in inmates for the year, I think that's a good year. We've averaged 32.3 inmates, which was, we were at 41 last year. So, you know, you know, it all helps with some expenses and budget. I'm working with Vicki to make sure my budget's okay. It looks like I'm pretty good. Food-wise, usually I'm short on the food, but I think we'll have a little surplus in the food budget and so forth, so I think so far, we're looking pretty good budget-wise for, for my department. The guys have been busy. You know, if we have a, a snow like we did, it's good to have it on the weekends because it seems like we're a little slower paced, even though we had SDSU, to my knowledge, we not, didn't have any major, major problems with. I did have deputies up there working and so forth, but everybody was pretty much huddled up and, and trying to stay warm. I don't know, Brian, if you were there or not, but, yeah. Anyway, everybody was pretty much trying to stay warm, so that worked out good. I'm not sure if there's one more game at SDSU, will, will we host another game?
The only thing would be is if, I think, if we win and then NDSU would lose, then we would host that semifinal game.
Okay.
So if we win and NDSU wins, we'll be going up there.
Okay. And that's something that happened like last year. I think we had two games in December last year, so there's possibility we could have one more. Now, I don't, I only bill out once for, and that's kind of what the Highway Patrol did too, is, you know, for wages. And last year, we didn't get reimbursement till the new year, so that went in, so, and last year was $9,800, so I take it that it's probably going to be around that $10,000 mark again that will get reimbursed from the athletic department and for wages and so forth, so. But that won't come in until probably 2019, so. Anyway, the other thing I just, 24/7 keeps us busy, for UAs, I, just to kind of explain a little bit, and we do 77 UAs for 24/7. That's, that's just for 24/7. But I also do 14, the jail does 14 for Drug Court. Parole and Court Services, we do another 14. So technically with everything, we do approximately 152 UAs a week on an average. Now with Hope probation that I talked about last time, I had indicated that Court Services was going to do them during the week. Well, that's changed, is that they want my office to do them, which I figured that would happen. And they're talking 10 to 20, so that's going to be on top of everything else. The New, I met with the Judge Abby, Judge Howard Molly from Court Services, myself, and, and Bart was with us and Darren DeYoung, because he's on the board with Drug Court, and the New State's Attorney. Now, the New State's Attorney wants to do some diversion programs starting the first of the year. So he wants to maybe add on some more work to my office. So I guess what I'm, I'm looking at is, I talked several weeks ago, and I know we don't know where we're at with our building, but if there's a possibility that, when we talked about expanding at my office, we thought maybe possibly Larry and Stephanie, or Commissioner Miller, if you can, if you can refresh my memory, we talked about possibly, possibly doing the addition of the 24/7 area right away before everything else. That would, I have a lot of congestion in the jail with, especially when they come in to download with their SCRAM bracelets. I'm trying to do it through the window, but sometimes it's easier for them to come in. So I have 15 that have to come in additional to the UAs. I guess what I'm getting at is I'm just looking for some, if we could move forward on at least getting that 24/7 expansion, that would take a lot of congestion out of the, out of the booking area. And I guess that's what I'm looking at. I'm not looking for, for you to say yes or no or anything, just, just, I'm just just putting that into the commission's thought process as we move forward, is that if I could, if we do move forward, if I could start that 24/7 addition and put my 24/7 people in there, that would just take a lot of pressure off, off booking. My, you know, my staff does a good job back there. They, you know, they, they do wonderful, but it's hectic back there during the day with all the UAs. And now it's going to be even more, you know, so I, I'm just throwing that out, so. Other than that, unless you have some questions, I have one deputy that is at 13-week academy. I have, the dog handler is still, I think he has three weeks left, and then Sergeant Pike broke his finger and, and, and hurt his ribs, and so he's on light duty. So I had to pull my school resource officer out on patrol, and I put Pike in as school resource because he's supposed to be limited duty. So I still have someone in the schools taking those, those types of calls. If you look on the, on the last page, they still continue to stay busy. In Volga, in Elkton and White, you know, they've, every time they're there, there's something, there's something to do, so. They stay busy in the schools. I have a meeting with, and I'm on the agenda for a Department of Transportation meeting tomorrow with the Highway Patrol in the state. I'm concerned about the intersection at Aurora Corner. For some reason, that intersection, the, one of the, one of the last snowstorms, not this one, but the first one we had, you know, I had five or six cars sliding in the ditch in that area, and I was asking for sand and, and hopefully tomorrow, we can get a little better, you know, when we request, you know, when I request for the Highway Department, man, they're out sanding right now. Not that it's me, but it's a lot to do with the superintendent saying, get out there and sand. But anyway, the, so I'm trying to get a better feel on, on the areas that we have problems, we need to have a solution to help the safety of, and that intersection is just bad. We've, you know, we've had one life there, and, and last year, we had a major accident there, and for some reason, I don't know if it's the trees or what there, but that's just a bad intersection. And, and so I'm hoping that tomorrow, we can get a little better feel on when they come out the sand and those, so. I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just hoping to become more efficient for the safety and stuff, so. And the Highway Patrol is agreeing too, that's why they want me on the agenda, because they have a concern at that intersection also. I don't know if any of you have had any calls on that intersection, but we are trying to, trying to deal with it, so.
And the responsibility for sanding, since it's a state highway, is the state DOT, correct? So we can't really go out and start sanding their stuff. It's, I'm sure that shelter belt on the south side-
They'll do the intersection, you know, the, the county road up to 14. That's always, they're, they're good about doing that for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually we'll just turn through the intersection or something. We don't cut it off immediately at our property line, you know, we're just use common sense.
Yeah. So anyway, okay. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Dick?
Well, I didn't have a lot of stuff to talk about today, but obviously, there must be some things. We've been working on wrapping up some outdoor projects, doing some drainage and fixing some culverts and whatever, because of the weather, the frost is in the ground so far, we can't do much more than that. With the snow removal, it's just kind of on a as event basis, what equipment we'll need, what manpower we'll need. As far as additional equipment or whatever, our shop, we can override everything and operate doors and stuff manually. We don't, in an emergency situation, there isn't a lot of computer usage as far as being in contact with others. Our two-way radio, we're on Bob's frequency, so that works for us. He would probably like to see us on our own, which would be an improvement. But other than that, I've been in touch with Brian, and he's looking forward to starting on the 17th. He obviously had a lot more snow and mess down there to deal with. He'll probably stop up next week. He's not sure on what days to go around, so I don't know if I'll be here for that administration day with the administration or whatever it's called on the 11th or whatever. If, if, if he's here, I probably would spend time with him instead. And I guess that is about it. And as far as helping out, you know, when, when they need call for materials, we do the best we can. You never know where the people will be located. We, we try to do the best we can. That's, that's what we do.
I have two questions for Dick now, and then I'll let you guys ask questions, sorry about that. My first one was at our, at our last commission meeting, you talked about those two small structures that we didn't get done this year. Were those structures that we had contracted with Holloway to do?
Yes.
And did they, is there a reason they didn't get done? Do we need to be watching that in the future?
Well, the, the biggest reason this year was because of the water level. In the environment they were working at, it just didn't, they were always hoping that it would go down to a level that would be manageable. As you know, most of them in both locations were running better than half-full all year long. Now, obviously, with the frost in the ground and everything and the mess, it just wouldn't be possible to, to do it now, so they'll get them first thing. However, we have, and they're built, and they're in the yard in Mitchell, the, the boxes, so that will be no problem. Whenever Holloway can come in to do the work, it'll get done. So probably, I would say, early this spring would be the-
And I guess I was just wondering if, how we are on their list of priority for projects to get done, if, if there's an issue with that.
No, usually what they do is we reserve a window of time with them, and like this year, if the weather would have cooperated, when they replaced that bridge deck on 16, they would have did those two small structures at the same time. With them, we're hiring on an, on an hourly basis, so it's very important that we group and compile the best we can. This year, it just wasn't, in, in past years, it's worked very well. And it saves us a lot of money because we're contributing to them being able to get done in a very quick fashion. So we want to be there too when, when they're ready to go. So yeah, they're, they're coordinating with us, but with the way the project was this year and the water levels, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't have been efficient, no, and it would have just been a mess, so.
And then, just go ahead.
And also the two small structures that they didn't get done, they're, they're, they're passable, they're not posted or anything. Where they did come on 16, that was a posted bridge, which we needed to have done for our other projects, and they did come and get that done, that was great.
And they, and they repaired the structure right west of that that had some problems that would have been reported in our bridge report that we'll talk about at the next meeting, so I don't want to waste a lot of time today on that. But it's a very win-win type of arrangement because they're not wasting their time and we're not paying for wasted hourly rates. When they're ready to go, we're ready to go, and, and we kind of push it through the best we can.
And you'll be here on the 18th?
I will. After that, I, Eric did an interview with me, so I'll probably be out buying papers and whatever, but I'll stop by on the 18th, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Dick? Thank you.
I guess I got a quick question for Stacy. Budgeting purposes for those, you know, obviously, we appropriated for them this year, it's not going to be spent until next year. Anything from highway that is unspent rolls into fund balance, does that fund balance the general fund, or does that stay in the road and bridge?
Road and bridge.
Okay. And so that fund balance there, so when we need to make an appropriation to pay for those culverts, we can take a-
We would have to do a supplemental budget hearing and take money from that fund balance and put it back into-
Operating, but-
Yeah, basically the fiscal year budget to be able to spend.
But within that road and bridge, though, not fund balance in general, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Moving on to regular business. Item number eight, compromise and settlement of County Aid League. Did you want to come up, Mike, and talk to us about this?
Well, this is in your packet, this is a young man who's 19-years-old, who had been doing a seasonal job. He had started a different job, but as most of you are probably aware of, it takes about 90 days before you can get on a healthcare system. Being 19, you probably don't think health insurance is all that high of a priority. In his particular case, since he was going on to another position, he did not keep the Cobra, and at that time, he probably really didn't think a whole lot about it even being an option. And unfortunately for him, he did end up needing assistance with that hospital bill. With his moving, he didn't, you know, keep up with this. This has been over eight years ago, you know, almost nine years ago that this took place. So when he came in to purchase a house, he was unable to. I said, usually the board will approve it if you can pay over half to three-quarters of the, the amount that's owed. And so without having the money to, to do that and still purchase the home, he did go to his grandmother, and he's a very fortunate young man when his grandmother said, I can give you $5,000. And so my suggestion is, is that we accept the offer and release the lien, and as you can see, it's approximately two-thirds of the amount owed.
Mike, when, when we talk about the balance on the amount owed being 73, 57, 39, does that include any interest, or is that the original amount we paid?
That is the original amount we paid. Any assistance that comes through the welfare office, it's, it's a lien, which is a set-dollar amount, and so there is no interest, fees, or other things associated with that. And this is one of the, actually, this is one of the first cases that I'd done, and it was, you know, without going into his medical history, it was a, a medical emergency, met all the criteria. So, like I say, 19 and unfortunate, a lot of 19-year-olds don't know a lot- I say, nineteen and unfortunate, a lot of nineteen-year-olds don't know a lot about COBRA, or at the same time, he didn't have the money, he was, you know, a seasonal worker at that time. Uh, the good news is, he has a full-time job now that does pay benefits. He was probably without insurance approximately three months, which is, you know, is unfortunate for him that this happened in that three-month period.
Any other questions? We have a resolution. Anybody wanna make a motion on the resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote on that.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then we have the action to approve a satisfaction for that county lien. Would we have a motion on that?
Move approval, second.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County in the amount of twenty thousand, seventy-five dollars for reimbursement from insurance for a towed patrol car. Receipt number four-three-seven-five-four-five. General ledger line one-oh-one dash four dash two-one-one dash four-three-four-zero. Would we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Did you wanna say anything, Stacy?
Uh, no, this is just our reimbursement for, just our insurance check from Claims Associates for the sheriff's patrol vehicle that was damaged. So, and I know this part of, um, this goes back into Marty's budget, I think you have, this is going to go towards, we're still looking at getting a vehicle purchased before the end of the year.
Yes, uh, um, they haven't called me yet. When they get the serial, they're, they, when it gets assigned a serial number, it's usually two weeks after that and the car is, is built. And, but I haven't got that information, but I got my fingers crossed that it'll be here. It is ordered, uh, through the state bid. And, uh, it looks like I, depending on where my budget is, is that, um, the, the total cost of the patrol car is thirty-two thousand, two-seventy-one, and then with the twenty thousand, that leaves me that I need twelve thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. But I know I got about a thousand ninety-five left over from this year's car budget, so that brings it down to eleven thousand. So I'll, depending on where my budget is, 'cause I know Commissioner Pierce says, "Try to find some money in your budget to, to help with that," but it, it still may be around twelve thousand dollar contingency, uh, approximately.
Anything else? We'll have a roll call vote.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action to approve request to fill vacancy for a heavy equipment operator in the highway department.
So moved.
Dick, did you wanna say anything about that?
Um, no, that just, we're hoping to get that going as, um, soon as possible.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for an IT support technician in the commission department.
Move approval, second.
Stacy, did you wanna add anything?
This is a new position in the IT part, IT department to, um, this was discussed at budget time and is, and it is in the, uh, twenty-nineteen budget. So this, this position would not, uh, this hire would not take place until after the first of the year. But this is to give additional support staff for the IT, uh, Sean. And as noted, um, we're planning on broadcasting, the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings with, which is an additional nightly meeting, uh, monthly nightly meeting, that this person would also be able to assist with in getting those broadcasts, so.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number E, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for office manager in the sheriff's department.
Second.
Sheriff, did you wanna say anything?
Hey, Kathy, Kathy put in her, um, retirement, she's gonna retire in February, and, uh, she's been there as long as I've been there. Actually, she came six, she was there six months when I got elected, so she's been six months longer than I've been. But, uh, she's, uh, gonna retire. I need to work on her job description, and so that, I, so I mainly wanted to get, uh, approval, uh, to do the vacancy as soon as I get the, uh, her, the, the job description updated. It, uh, I haven't looked at it for twenty years, basically. And, uh, I think it's everything but cleanup horsedoodoo or something, so I mean, it needs up...
Didn't you say that it still talks about using a typewriter?
Yes. I haven't looked at that. We upgraded the assistant, uh, administrat, uh, administration person, because we've hired that before, but Kathy's been there, we've not looked at it. So, she's supposed to be dispatch, and when I told her that she is gonna dispatch emergencies, I thought she was gonna fall out of her chair, but, uh, we gotta get that off there, too. But there's just, once I get that upgraded and approved through Stacy and HR, then we'll be able to, to go ahead and advertise.
Well, I just have to say that her resignation letter was one of the most gracious resignation letters that, that I've ever read. And I believe she was over there the whole time I sat on the bench, and she is going to be sorely missed by Brookings County. So, anybody have any other comments to make? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Chair, I have a quick question. Stacy, we see the hours and reimbursement and stuff like that, and we, uh, have to budget for stuff like this. And is this going to, you know, 'cause with the new requirements from the state, you know, that this is a, a liability, and we have to budget for a certain portion of the liability?
Right, and I think we did budget for some payouts in the twenty-nineteen budget with the sheriff's office.
Okay.
We, I think we were anticipating this one, so.
And this is part of what legislative audit said we have to set money aside for, so we have done that for two years, right?
Yeah, they wanted to see us have a, a line item for, um, for this exact purpose, for paying out, um, when somebody leaves or retires.
Any other questions? Item F, action to approve appointments to the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board.
Do you wanna go individually ones, or all, all of them?
What's your preference?
It, it doesn't matter to me if you wanna do them all together, that would be fine. Um, we did have, there is one missing, the archery range committee member position. Um, the current, the, all of those that applied are the incumbents. We didn't receive any additional appli, applications, and we did not receive then the application from the incumbent that's for the archery range committee. So we would, we would probably, you know, re-advertise, reach out to, to that individual and see if they're interested, and then re-advertise that position.
So, would we have a motion to approve Andy Dupre as the 4H leader and/or extension board member, Jerry Nold as the 4H shooting sports board member, Arden Segal as the pistol range volunteer, and Tim Reed as the community at-large member for the BCOAC?
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Commission Department Director Report.
Before I get started to, with our executive session that's coming up, we do have a phone conference as part of that, and I had indicated that that would take place between nine-thirty and ten. We had a couple other things pop up. Um, I could do my report and then, you know, I don't know what, I guess I'm maybe looking for some direction from the chair if you want to move that exec, session up on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll go into executive session, is what you're saying, then we'll come back and do commission reports. Let's do our state's attorney's report first, then, so that, um...
And you want to wait with my report until after?
Yeah, let's, let's do Michael's report, which I imagine is going to be short.
It's very short, unless you like hearing the sound of my voice.
We do.
We do. Uh, no, we are just, uh, preparing for the, uh, changeover, uh, come January, and, um, perhaps in our next report, I'll have some more information, but that's what we're doing right now.
Thank you. And then Stacy, are you gonna take more than ten minutes?
Probably not.
Go ahead and have your report.
Okay. On kind of an, on a side note, um, to the power outages that we had, uh, Chief Erickson had noted, there was a transformer near this building that was affected. Um, they need to repair that transformer, and when, in, when they do that, they need to shut power down completely to this building. And so, uh, we believe that's going to take place tomorrow after hours. Um, we have our maintenance staff on hand to shut down the generator that would automatically kick on. And then I think Sean is going to be here to kind of monitor servers, and then everyone, it, it could take anywhere from half an hour to a couple of hours, they're not real sure, but then to make sure everything, once the power comes back up, that everything comes back online, the, um, mainly like the HVAC system, to make sure we have heat in the building again before, um, and Sean was gonna monitor servers and whatnot. So, uh, just so you know, that tomorrow after hours, that's going to be happening here, I think, tomorrow, uh, for this building. There is a letter that was in your packet, a, a letter of congratulations to, um, William Eggburg on receiving his rank of Eagle Scout, that we will have Commissioner Pierce sign. I drafted that letter for you to review. You've also been invited to his, um, ceremony, which is coming up on Sunday, December sixteenth, that's at two-thirty at the Volga Community Center. I handed out several things, uh, this morning in front of you. The first is that, um, Steve Breitman completed the Madera Monument Quiet Title Action on Friday, that judgment and the findings of fact. I handed those out, um, they're on your desk this morning. And once he receives a certified copy of that information, he'll file that with the Register of Deeds, and we'll get that, um, property added onto our, our list. Um, as Sha, uh, Bob had noted, we're get, they're working on getting the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings ready to be broadcast. Um, I guess maybe looking for some direction from the board as to what you would like, uh, the re, the rebroadcast schedule for those meetings to be. Right now, the commission meetings, they rerun two times a week. They run, uh, Wednesdays at seven PM and Friday mornings at ten AM. And, you know, Sean's suggestion was to, uh, have something similar that, to that. What they do is tho, they run at those times until we have another meeting, and then they're replaced with the current meeting. So, do you know, um, what your thoughts are on how many times and when you would like those meetings rebroadcast? Have you given that any thought? Otherwise, you can think about it, and I could maybe bring that back up at the next meeting on the eighteenth, so you have some maybe time to, to visit about it. Um, and then I just have some upcoming dates. I did hand out the agenda for the Conservation District meeting, that's taking place tomorrow. It says one-fifteen AM, I hope not, I think that's in the afternoon at the NRCS conference room. Uh, one-fifteen tomorrow, uh, at the NRCS conference room, the Conservation District monthly meeting. We do have the, uh, Brookings Holiday Celebration coming up Thursday at five PM at the McCrory Gardens Education Center. A few departments' heads have, uh, noted that we do have the Leadership Brookings class coming at ten AM next Tuesday, a week from today. We're going to be meeting next door in the community room. I don't know if, do any of you plan to attend that? Uh, we have only about forty-five minutes, so each, you know, each, um, department head will just have to give a little brief, um, kind of general rundown of what their department does, and if there is at least one commissioner here, um, that would be nice, just to visit about commission meetings. Mike would like to. Okay.
I'm not sure yet. I, I'm going to a concert in Miller.
Okay.
For my grandson, and I, I'm, I don't know if I'm gonna drive back or stay over.
Sure. So, at least we have, we know we have Ryan and, and Mike lined up to be there. Uh, the holiday potluck is next Thursday, the thirteenth, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty here at the building. And again, that Eagle Scout ceremony is on the sixteenth for Will Eggbur, Eggburg, over at two-thirty at the Community Center in Volga. Uh, we do have, uh, Tuesday the eighteenth is also the next commission meeting, but that afternoon, we're doing the retirement reception for Commissioner Miller from two until four. It'll be here in the chambers, and we'll do, um, a program at about three o'clock that day. Offices will be closed the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for Christmas. And just one thing to note, uh, in the travel requests today, uh, there was a PIO, uh, Public Information Officer training that came up, just a one-day session down in Spirit Lake, Iowa. And I am the PIO officer, and then Laura Littlecott is my, my backup, and both of us plan to attend that, um, that conference. It was free of charge, just had to basically get ourselves there and have lunch. But, um, that is down in Spirit Lake, Iowa, we're not, we're gonna go down bright and early in the morning, it starts at eight, and then it wraps up about for four-thirty, and we'll head back that same day. So, um, but that travel, that travel request was approved this morning, just to note. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me. Yes, we are open on Monday, the thirty-first, New Year's Eve day, yes. And then Tuesday is the holiday, will be closed for New Year's Day.
And that just leaves us with, um, commission reports, and if nobody has anything really long, maybe we'll do those, so we don't have to come back after executive session. Should we do that? Commissioner Jensen?
On the twenty-seventh, I attended the Ag Appreciation, uh, banquet out at the Swiftail. Uh, I'd like to compliment Commissioner Pierce on her presentation of what, uh, what's going on in the county, uh, with our road and bridge program, and also with our proposed some zoning changes. Uh, I think it was very informative for the rural, uh, attendees. On the twenty-ninth, attended, uh, Spence Holly's, uh, gathering down at VFW, very interesting and informative. On the thirtieth, I did go out to the Swift, or the OAC and, uh, Susan Vanderwall's retirement party. That's all.
Thank you.
Um, on November thirtieth, I attended Susan Vanderwall's retirement party. It was well-attended, and I'm gonna apologize to the, um, the county people that I will be gone on the twelfth and thirteenth to South Dakota Association of County Commissioner Board of Directors meeting. So I will not be here for the potluck and et cetera. It's the first one I've missed in eight years.
Commissioner Krogman?
Uh, the twenty-eighth, I was at Communities of Excellence, and then twenty-ninth, I had, uh, Brookings Health Meeting, so, that's about it.
Commissioner Bartley?
On the twenty-seventh, I also attended the Ag Appreciation Banquet, and I thought the presentation that Commissioner Miller, or Chair, or Pierce, or Chairman made was informative for me, as well as the audience. On the twenty-eighth, was an ICAP meeting, the traditional three-hour meeting, and everything with ICAP is going well. That's it.
And on the twenty-seventh, I attended that Ag Appreciation Banquet, and thank you for your kind remarks. That was fun, and Tim the Dairy Farmer was the, uh, entertainment, and he was funny. Uh, on the twenty-eighth, I met with Terry, Richard, Luke, and Bob, who worked in ordinances, and we have set aside a morning, I think it's, um, might be the twenty-eighth of December, where we, we've got a block of time, we're gonna try to push out the, some of the ordinance stuff before Terry leaves. And I have been working with, um, Stacy and Laura and our outgoing and incoming state's attorneys to work on transition issues in the state's attorney's office. And that would be my report. Thank you. And I would take a motion to go into executive session in accordance with SDCL one-dash-twenty-five-dash-two, subpart one and subpart three personnel and consulting with legal counsel.
So moved.
Will be in exec, all in favor?
Aye.
And will be in executive session.